President.
Clerk Vanegas.
Present.
Trusty Barnes.
Present.
And Trusty Pizzotti.
Present.
Announcements of actions taken in closed session. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Dismissal Discipline Release. Information received. Government Code Section 54957.6. Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSAA, and Management. Information received. I am going to move on to, actually if you will indulge me, I'm going to read a land acknowledgement, if that's okay with everybody. So, Washington Unified acknowledges that indigenous peoples and nations, including Patwin, Nishnemewak, and Winton peoples and nations, have stewed through generations the lands and waterways of what we know as the city of West Sacramento. We honor and respect the enduring relationship that exists between these peoples and nations and this land. May the wisdom of the generations before us lead us in our discussions. Thank you so much. I am going to now move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments? I understand that there's an amendment to an MOU.
Yes.
Have an amendment to our MOU. Just need the amendment. Yes, an amendment with our MOU for the United.
So do we need to do any, do we need to pull that from consent and separate and then swap out the new?
Yes.
Okay. That is item. Any other amendments to the agenda?
No.
Seeing that there are none, I will entertain a motion to adopt as amended. Clerk Barnes moves.
I second.
Clerk.
Trusty Barnes moves. Clerk Vanegas second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. We have an amended agenda. Communications and celebrations? We don't have any celebrations? Anybody get engaged? Any birthdays? Any retirements? I'm just dragging this out because it's such a short agenda. Happy birthday, Trusty Pizzotti. Last time you were here, you had a milestone. Okay. So with that said, let's wish Trusty Pizzotti a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Kobe. Happy birthday to you.
Okay, moving on to association reports. We got notification from Daniel Gandara that there is no CSAA report. And I do not, did not see a WSTA report, and I do not see anyone here, so. I have a question. What happened to our student board member?
We should begin our student board member reports in October.
Okay.
So we're working to make sure all the schools are ready and the student board members are ready to present. So not at the September 22nd meeting, but our first meeting in October.
Thank you. Apologize, I just noticed that, oh wait, we don't have our student board member. Perfect. Moving on to item number L, public comments. I, there, I don't know if there are public comments here, but there are public comments submitted, so before then, I will read the disclaimer. Members of the public may address the board on the topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know, the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for any item. Individual speakers may be limited up to three minutes to comment on any topic unless amended. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's rights, privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actual civil defamation. All of the board may not prohibit such comments. Or policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under this open meeting law that governs this meeting. Okay, with that said, Mario, are there any public comments from the room for item L? General public comments?
No public comments requests received.
Not. I'm going to read this public comment from Ms. Gail Costello, if you want to start the timer. "I recently became aware of a California education consulting firm named Pacific Educational Group, and I was already aware of the Panorama Instructional Group. Both provide curricular and instructional materials related to the general issue of equity in the classroom, and more particularly to racial equity. Some of the concepts they address are rational thinking, planning for the future, the method of meritocracy, colorblindness, and others. I looked at the district website, and I cannot find anything more specific on discrimination than a pledge to avoid discrimination of transgender and other gender students, and that policy is over five years old. But I know that the district just adopted a five-year plan to focus on this issue. I have two questions. Are any teachers attending district-provided or district-funded training on critical race theory presented by any education or group? And two, are CRT principles being applied in any classrooms, not only as drills, activities, directly taught to students, but in any way? American parents have been astonished and frustrated to learn more of the topics on which schools, classrooms are investing time and talent in the name of transparency. It would be reassuring if WST most would post their instructional materials and teacher training materials online. I do not see any concrete about, any concrete, anything concrete about critical online. After that, we have observed around the country, in various states and school districts, where schools are hiding the instructional materials that contain an outright CRT emphasis. It would be reassuring to be able to read not just the vision and mission statements, but the details therein. The Wall Street Journal, New York Times, and Washington Post have all run recent articles comparing nationwide reading mathematics achievement scores for 2022 and 2020. I would have preferred to compare the 2022 scores to 2018 scores, but the year is less than important than the results. U.S. nine-year-olds in 2020 performed five points better in reading and seven points better in math, the nine-year-olds in the spring of 2022. Nationwide 2022's reading and math achievement scores are the lowest in 30 years. Can you provide somewhere on the WST website accessible data comparing 2022 achievement scores with WST scores from previous years, previous full years of school attendance in the past? And secondly, if the WST scores indicated decline in reading or math capabilities, what have you as a board adopted to remedy students' gaps or deficiencies? Sacramento Unified School District announced recently that they are not going to extend their school year in order to provide additional instructional and practice time for elementary school students to catch up, as the WST announced a remedial catch-up plan for those students who are struggling. Thank you." That is the end of the public comment. And I would encourage Ms. Costello to actually look at our strategic plan, because we have announced strategies to address those issues and have had lengthy discussions about addressing the concerns that we have all raised about the impact of the pandemic. Okay, moving on. There are no public hearings, and we are moving on to item N, information and discussion items. Measure V, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Annual Report. Assistant Superintendent Monique Stovall.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Wong, members of the board, Dr. Hildreth, and our community. This evening, our Measure Z, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Chairperson, Cindy Kuzanis. Oh, I knew I was gonna do it. Measure V.
As in victory.
V as in victory, because we're almost done with this, this measure. Measure V Chairperson, Cindy Kuzanis, will be presenting their annual report for the bond.
Welcome, Ms. Kuzanis. Long time no see.
It's been a while.
I know.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation to come and do just a short verbal presentation about Measure V, yes, and victory. It's nice to be before you, and I appreciate the appointment from the board for this position. I serve as, in the capacity of, as the chair for the Measure V Committee. And if we go to the next slide, I know you all know this, but just in case somebody's watching who doesn't, Measure V was originally passed by voters almost six years ago, so no, almost eight years ago, rather, back in 2014. And the district has nearly expended the nearly $50 million in general obligation bonds, or rather, it's been expended, but we're, we're working through some things. We'll talk through that. It focused on three areas: safe and secure schools, quality learning environments, and college and career pathways. And the report today covers the annual, the expenditures, rather, from November 1st, 2020. So really, our COVID period through March 7th, which is when we got the last report from Patty Paulson. The next slide. It's a little awkward looking off to the side here. Let me just figure out my orientation. We've held five meetings during this period. I think it's really important to note that we've had, struggled with a quorum. As this measure is really winding down and Measure Z is really ratcheting up, there has not been the interest in, in attending, as well as, I think, just COVID itself, even though these meetings have been online, there has been some, some interest in not meeting online. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, there are eight existing members on paper. We have had some resignations during this period. Those representatives do meet part of the criteria, which is the parent-teacher organization, parents of schools of children enrolled at the district, and then, in my capacity, I'm an at-large member. We are soliciting, or rather, the district is actually soliciting for additional members from a business organization, senior citizens organization, and the bona fide taxpayers organization. And we know we're in the same boat as, as Measure Z in that, in that regard. But if anybody wants to apply, they're welcome to through the homepage of Measure V, CPAC, which is on the district's website. So during this period, we looked at documents that were provided by Key Analytics, which is Patty Paulson, who does just a fantastic job in summarizing things and, and orienting the community members, of course, we're all volunteers, to how things are organized on the expenditure front. And so we did look at the Fall Break Campus Change Order. We've looked at the audit reports through this period of time, and then the five Key Analytic reports. And those are all posted to the Measure V website, if anybody'd like to look through those themselves. And just like every other presentation that the Measure V Committee has made before you, the district is in compliance. We do have concluded that the expenditures have been generally used as, as appropriate, that the funds were not expended for teacher administrative salaries. And then finally, they were, they were spent in accordance with Exhibit A, which is another one of your attachments. So just wanted to acknowledge your staff. You have new staff during this period. We've been really delighted to, to meet with Ms. Stovall on a regular basis. She's been a great addition to, to supporting the group. But we are hoping that with the less than $1.6 million left in this bond, that you'll, you'll spend it as quickly as possible, because, like I said, the interest is waning for us to even get a quorum. And so we are worried that we couldn't, we wouldn't be able to move forward and do an annual report in the future if we, we don't, if you don't expend the funds and we don't get those projects done. That's all I have today.
How many positions are open right now, or we're recruiting for? Can you remind me?
It's those three groups, but I think that there's discretion on how many positions can actually, if you wanted to do multiple. It doesn't sound like there's a waiting list either, right?
If anybody's.
So for Measure V, we're looking for at least one person.
Yeah, to your point, I think a lot of people are, Measure Z is top of mind. They forget that Measure V still has money. Well, let's, requesting the board to kind of do some specific outreach, just to, again, love to have you onboard as chair, but understand the need to.
And I can share, we're doing the same outreach for Measure Z as we're doing for Measure V, including, you know, working with the city to try to get information out. And so it's just, it's typically a challenge to get members of the committee that are going to stay there for a long time. People who have been on this committee for quite some time, they've dedicated an immense amount of their, their volunteer time. And so, you know, after, sometime people might get a little fatigued, but we'll keep recruiting and, and trying to find them.
And we appreciate that, again, that was just a joke, nobody's spouse should, none of our spouses should be on it as conflict of interest. So just want to clarify that, that was just a joke. Go ahead, Vice President Kirby Gonzalez.
Thank you. I heard you mention also the spending and being prudent with our timeline. And so I'm wondering if we can have a reminder of what are some of the expenditures we're looking at, and are some of those possibly delayed? I know we've had other things due to the supply chain and others, and so are there any delays with that? Do we have everything identified of what the remainder funds will be spent?
So as she shared, it's a little less than 1.6 million, and as we're closing the books right now, we are going through to identify what expenditures did we have last year that could qualify for Measure V? And so Billy and I have been looking very closely. We were looking at kind of the last part of closing out the books this year. I wouldn't say it's necessarily a delay in being able to do projects. It's, we're pretty close to being done, and any other, any of those miscellaneous projects that are still there, we're going to try to get those done now that we're, we're towards the end and we have this extra funding. The extra funding isn't just because we didn't spend the money. During these last eight years, we also had money come in from the state to offset some of our other expenses. And so that has helped us to be able to do more with Measure V than we had originally anticipated.
Thank you.
Steve Pizzotti?
Yeah. So has all of the 1.6 been earmarked for project? Or is it?
Not all of it has been earmarked for specific projects. It's basically, we came down to the end, we got, you know, we accomplished what we said we were going to accomplish, and now that we have this desire to kind of, you know, clean up these things, maybe not initiate any new projects directly associated with Measure V, we're going back to say, oh, the new roof that we put on over at Yolo, is that an appropriate expenditure? So instead of using our deferred maintenance fund, can we use this for Measure V? So we're, like I shared, we're closing the books right now to see if we can go ahead and expend all of that. So our great CBOC will be able to do one last.
Any other questions? Okay.
The only, the only thought that I, the other thought I had was, is there a possibility of rolling in the remaining funds into Measure Z funds?
It depends on the language. So Measure V had a specific, and I think in, in one of her slides, it has specific use that our voters voted on. So if something doesn't meet that, that goal, then we're not able to use it. However, I do think it's very important that we first look at what we've done over these last eight years and tie it directly to Measure V.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Go ahead, Vice President.
So thinking about, I know one of them is safe and secure schools, and so one that we've been working on is the water bottle filling stations or some quick strikes, and it seems like that might be an appropriate use that is, you know, what our taxpayer base would want, and then also can then free up some of the other bond money as we look at projects. So would something like that be appropriate then as well?
I think it would be appropriate, however, we've earmarked our ESER funding for our water bottle filling stations. And so we're looking at all of our variety of funding sources to actually free up monies elsewhere for some of those unexpected and unanticipated items that eight years ago we may not have known that we needed to replace a roof, or we didn't know how we were going to fund it, so we can take care of those types of projects.
Great. Thanks for that reminder. Trusty Barnes, that's okay?
So thinking about the committee, it sounds like you're going to go through all of these things and figure out, or that's what the committee would do, sort of, well, closing books, no?
No.
So when we think about the committee and replacing members, is there a, is there a requirement that needs to, you know, I mean, I know that we have these, oh, well, not on this page, but we had the specific ETA, you know, that they had to fit certain roles or fit into certain roles, but within the community, but do they, do you just volunteer? Do they get voted in? Like, how do you become a committee member if we were reaching out to people?
You definitely volunteer. Yes.
Okay, so then they would be appointed by, these new ones too, there would be just a, I don't really know what the process would look like for the committee after.
Yeah, sure. So there are specific position requirements for a CBOC, and we seek to fill all of those different positions. It might be a businessperson, it might be a parent of a student within the district, you know, all of these variety of positions. And so there is a requirement, and it's, we need to do our due diligence as well to continually recruit. Even though we're winding down, we want to make sure that we fill those seats so that the community can have oversight over our expenditures. That's what the, the purpose is of the CBOC. And so even though we're winding down, we are going to continue to recruit. What happens is they submit their application, district staff reviews that application, and then we bring forth to you for approval of those members.
And potentially, well, maybe it doesn't matter, but I think we can be useful in helping with outreach.
We would appreciate.
I know what I'm, specifically what I'm looking for in the qualifications, it might help too.
We can share that.
Awesome, thanks.
Just one, I'm sorry, it was more about the, the committee and recruitment. Can you define a bona fide taxpayer organization for me?
I will have to get back to you on that exact definition.
Because, I mean, that may, I, I have a few people in mind, but I, I need to know what that exactly.
We will share that with you. Yes, let's get a legal analysis of what that could mean, and please get back to us, and hopefully we can, you know, get folks on both. 1.7, 1.7 you said?
Six. It's about 1.6. It's, it's getting lower.
That's still a lot, a lot, that's a lot of money, considering kind of the challenges with supply and other things. So we, all the time, I'm looking at Cindy, because we really thank you for sticking with us, as there are just kind of supply chain issues, right, that keep us from spinning that down. All right. Any other questions? If not, okay, you are excused.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda item O. Last minute to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing, seeing that there are none, do I have a motion to approve with item 1A removed?
Move.
Okay. Clerk Vanegas moves, Trusty Pizzotti seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have your consent agenda items. Also, I think it's, I think that this board, and specifically, Trusty Pizzotti, has kind of raised the issue of dyslexia. Really happy to see the UCFS partnership on dyslexia and being part of that pilot program. So thank you to staff. I know, like during COVID, it was hard to have the conversation, but really thank you for engaging that conversation. I love that it doesn't cost us any money. Right now. Yes, well, resources, downtime, but, so thank you for that. Want to acknowledge the hard work that went into that and being responsive to our request. Moving on to action item, we moved item 1A, Approval Memorandum of Understanding between Washington Unified School District and United Way Capital, California Capital Region.
Thank you, President Wong. Yes, we have been in conversation with our United Way partners and wanted to make sure with the MOU that we are presenting, that it details all of the guidelines and support that we will need to move forward with our Community Schools Planning Grant. And then we have a federal grant that we're working on, so we've made the modifications just today, and wanted to make sure we're able to share the most recent MOU.
Any questions? I know we just got sent the amended, so. One, just really excited to see the full service partnerships and the federal drawdown, just to ensure that our wellness centers come to fruition, regardless of what happens with the ARPA dollars from the county and the planning that is needed there. So thank you for engaging that. And again, I love the fact that zero dollars. It's always really good to get, to get, to have our partnerships to make sure that we're getting meeting the needs of our students. Any other questions? I'll let, oh. Seeing that there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Removed.
Vice President Kirby Gonzalez moves. Clerk Barnes. I keep looking at you and wanting to say clerk. Trusty Barnes.
You know how hard, you know how hard.
I look strong.
You look very, you look very similar. Your signature. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. He said aye. He mumbled aye. So moving, there are no board governance items, but hopefully there will be some. We're going to have a policy meeting at the end of the month, I think so. And then moving on to board and superintendent comments. Superintendent Hildreth.
So thank you, everyone, and want to have this opportunity to just really share some good things that are happening in our schools. So I want to give you a brief highlight of what's been going on. I want to begin by reminding everyone that September is National Attendance Awareness Month, and we want to take this opportunity to express our gratitude to our Washington Unified Community for ensuring that students are not only in attendance for their classes, but they're fully present and engaged. Also, as we focus on cultivating healthy relationships that encourage and empower our students to perform to their full potential, we know it's important with everyone back on campus, so we can really focus on positive relationships and creating partnerships with our parents and our community. And over the month, we're going to be sharing some exciting visuals and stories from our community across social media channels and on our website. And so we encourage everyone to take an active role in discussing and sharing these posts as we pursue our quest for equity, excellence, and empowerment for every Washington Unified student. Next, I want to highlight that once again, we're going to be offering free workshops for all families about parenting with positive discipline. And positive discipline can be used by parents, teachers, family members, and community leaders to learn to create responsible, respectful, and resourceful relationships. It's a five-week series that will be facilitated by Kristen Basden, and she's a certified facilitator for positive discipline. Our sessions will be offered in English and Spanish, and all materials are included. And so we encourage anyone who is interested to sign up as soon as possible, and please share this information. And our first session begins September 12th, so we're really looking forward to that. Earlier this week, we had about 50 sign up, and the number is growing. And we did start this last year, and it's from parents asking for, for more cohorts that were doing that. So I want to just thank parents for their interest, and thank our Director of Compliance and Accountability, Stephanie Grove, for kind of leading this effort for us and working with our families. We really appreciate it. Good news from our students. We are excited to announce that five River City High School students have been selected as College Board National Recognition Program recipients, which awards academic honors to underrepresented students. The college board's four recognition programs include the National African-American Recognition Program, the National Hispanic Recognition Program, the National Indigenous Recognition Program, and the National Rural and Small Town Recognition Program. So we want to celebrate the five students. So Christopher Mariano, he's receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award. Diego Macar is receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award. Diego Jimenez, the National Hispanic Recognition Award. Martin Palacios Rodriguez, National Hispanic Recognition Award. And Philip Maklar, receiving the National Hispanic Recognition Award. So that's great news for our students. And students who take eligible administrations of PSAT or AP exams are considered for these awards. And the, the students must also identify as being either African-American, Black, Hispanic, or Latinx. And it's not a scholarship program. Students can include this academic honor in their applications, and when they apply for, so congratulations to all our awardees. That's just, it's fabulous. We also want to highlight that we continue to follow current guidance from California Department of Health, our CDPH, to adapt our protocols across all levels of district operations. And as such, our team has reviewed and adjusted district-wide volunteer policies to align with current guidelines while ensuring the highest degree of safety and well-being for everyone on school campuses. And so we're pleased to announce that we have updated our volunteer process to allow unvaccinated volunteers. Our unvaccinated volunteers will need to. Our unvaccinated volunteers will need to provide our HR team with a weekly negative COVID-19 test, and these changes took effect this week on Wednesday. We're so grateful for the community and volunteers who want to get in schools and help our kids and help our admin. So we wanted to make sure we were able to adjust as we've been doing throughout the last year, year and a half to make sure we're safe, but also recognize that we're moving in a direction that is allowing some of the normalcy that we have been used to. To get more information about the policies or what's needed, we ask people to just visit our website. It's on there in our HR department. And then lastly, as we hopefully approach the end of an intense heat wave in the region, I just want to express my gratitude to our students, our families, our school staff for continued understanding. And we know that these extreme weather cycles have been very difficult for everyone and it's a significant impact on our entire community in a variety of ways. And so we appreciate advocacy and letting us know where things are not working well. I do want to highlight and shout out to our wonderful maintenance operations team. I think it was maybe Tuesday or Wednesday earlier this week, we actually had an oil spill at the maintenance near Clarendon. So they had hazmat cleaning things up. We also had some buses, our electric buses, that stopped kind of working well because of the heat, and they fixed it. And it just kept going. And that's what happens behind the scenes, that there are issues and things happen, and sometimes we find out about it later because it was just handled. And that's what our staff does. And we're so grateful for them to show how it's important when we talk about we support students. It's students in the classroom, and it's everybody else who's behind the scenes doing things so that what's happening in the classrooms and our schools can continue to be the focus. So I just want to say thank you to Director Terry Sousa and all of his team because great things are happening for kids and everyone is so committed. And then last but not least, I'm going to end with a personal celebration because I know that tonight is marking a good football game, the LA Rams, and which is near and dear to my son's heart. So I want to give him and the Rams a shout out tonight. And with that, I wish everyone a great month ahead.
Thank you. All right. So I see that's why we had a short agenda. Tracy Pizzari?
It is.
There's a game between you and your, the comments and the game.
That's right. Like, I'm going to be super quick about this to get to the game. I promise. Uh, so I just, the one, it's not so much a comment, I guess it's a comment slash question, is that pre-COVID, now that the, the policy has changed and we're going back to allowing volunteers on campus, pre-COVID, we made sure that we paid for, the district paid for the fingerprinting. And I want to make sure that, question mark, comment, that we are still continuing that policy. And with that done, we'll just.
So I, I believe we are, and I think our Assistant Superintendent Kamal G. Panu, if you're here, can you give us an update on that?
You just don't see you on this stage.
I can't quite see you.
I know. We see a shine though. There's a shiny. Yeah, we do, we do still pay for the fingerprinting for our volunteers.
Thank you.
Tracy Barnes? You are also between a football game.
Thank you. I, all that I was going to say was about the, the positive discipline parenting class. It was so good. I only got to take a few of the classes last year, but, and I have the study material that you can keep going back to, which is really helpful. So, I want to make jokes. So, but, but all that I was going to say about that was just that I have heard some people say that it is difficult with the time, timing. And I understand that because it was difficult for me too. But I think if you, it's such a short amount of time, if you can commit to that, I think this is the best time that works for everybody, or works for most people. I know it's not everybody, unfortunately, but it is so worth your time, so worthwhile. So I would say thank you for that. And I'm glad you, you mentioned it. That was, that's all I wanted to say. And I hope you're all staying cool.
All right. Stay cool.
Clerk Venegas.
Awesome.
Clerk Venegas.
Thank you. I'm going to take my time. No. So I just want to echo the fact that our students, our families, our staff, the board, just going to hashtag taking care of business. I just want to acknowledge, there's been plenty of distractions, and the idea is that everybody is doing their part. So this is what it looks like, this is what it feels like. Just want to make sure that we, we know what this looks like, what it, what it feels like so we can continue to, to model it as we move forward. Thank you.
Vice President Kirby Gonzalez?
Thank you. I want to acknowledge all of the supports that are happening for our kids this year. It's been phenomenal to get to see the classes that are here for families, as well as what individual school sites are putting on too, to support our students. There's, you know, Zones of Regulation, there is the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, and, and a slew of others as well. And it's been really great to see that and to see how many resources are out there that our staff are putting on, on top of what they're already doing. So I want to thank everyone for that. And I wanted to give a shout out to our students. It's early in the year and they're already out playing all over the place, including this last weekend at Chalk It Up, and our River City High School students are. And I also want to give a shout out then to our tech, technology, Chrissy Jordan, who I believe is the executive director of Chalk It Up. I don't want to give her the wrong title, but she pulled off a phenomenal event. It was really, really great. And I just wanted to give a shout out to our students who, it's wonderful to get out in the community at these big events and to see them playing. And, and of course, to their teachers as well, who are out there with them. And then in terms of teachers who are interested in National Board, I've talked about that before, and the application is open now. So those who are interested on the California Department of Education site, it's, the application is open from now until January 4th to apply for the state to pay for your National Board fees if you're at a qualifying school, which the majority of our educators are. And so I want to thank also HR, I know they were going to send out an email as well, but I wanted to highlight that, that it is here and it is live. And the National Board website has some great webinars and other resources that are all starting to get rolled out right now. And if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them as well. And then with that, I think we have a policy meeting. It's already came up. No other meetings have happened. And hopefully we'll all get an invite to go to homecoming as well. And it's been fun to get to see the signs already up for the homecoming dance and game that last year at this time, it was, you know, a question mark, how are we going to do this? How are we going to make it happen? So it's been really great to see all of the things happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody and their comments. And I, this is what leadership feels like. This is like operating in a well-oiled machine. Thank you for staff. It's been a rough two years, and it's just, the behind the scenes is so, again, in this heat wave, this historical heat wave, our, all of our staff have stepped up and leaned in and supported and have been responsive to parents, their concerns, their students' concerns, and just really grateful. Those are the things that we don't see and we don't hear. We get to hear all the very passionate like concerns and those, and I just want to applaud you all for being responsive to all of them with grace and understanding and just appreciate you all doing that. I have the privilege and honor of being a Golden Bell site visitation person, validation person for a couple of school districts. I would love for us to actually submit ourselves for a Golden Bell Award for our student services for a number of different things. We are fully staffed. There's a bunch of stuff that we've been doing. I'm going to encourage us next year to submit a Golden Bell Award to, so that I can validate our, our program. But as I, if I would, I could, because there's so many things that we don't talk about here, our Equity Plan, the Wellness stuff, all of it, our comprehensive supports for our kids, our, our facilities, Equity Mastery Plan that everybody else is using as a model. Like, there's so much here. So I'm going to encourage us to think about bragging a little bit more because we are so focused on doing the work that we don't brag enough, which I think would be helpful. We need. All right. With that said, moving on to future board agenda items, unaudited actual, September 2022, 20, 22, 2022.
That's a lot of twos.
That's a lot of twos. Approval of Comprehensive Student Safety Plan, September 22, 2022. Woo, Measure Z Progress Update, October 2022. Review Coordinated Program Budgets, October 2022. I know that we're probably going to talk about the school dress code again in policy, but we will encourage, we will, we will encourage, again, engagement of students. It's always really fun to hear them and have the dialogue with us, and they go, oh, that's why you. Oh. So really looking forward to that conversation. Any other items that we may have missed?
Just a reminder that we have a board study session this coming Wednesday, the 14th.
Oh.
From 5:00 to 7:00, from 5:00 to 6:00. That will be focused on sharing with the board with our strategic plan, what year one implementation looks like. And then from 6:00 to 7:00, that will be working with Nicole Anderson or Deborah Keyswright about what we want to focus on as a board governance team this year, knowing that one of the things we want to accomplish is, last year, we made sure we had our equity statement, which is part of our strategic plan, and now we need to focus on equity policy. 5:00 to 7:00. So 5:00 to 6:00 is the strategic plan portion, 6:00 to 7:00 is the board governance kind of plan for this year.
In full transparency, I'm on the East Coast, but I will be here.
And I'm running a meeting until 6:00, so I might be a little bit late for that. But my meeting ends right at 6:00, so I will get here as quickly as I can.
That means Clerk Venegas might be in charge.
Fully trusted.
Clerk Venegas will also be driving. We are busy folks, busy folks have, okay. Okay. Any other future, any other future board agenda items? Seeing that there are none, we are adjourned. Any comments?
I'm early.
I can open it.